We do, we have a Yeah, we have one from last year, from 2018.
Can we have a copy of that?
Are we looking for a full time in-house? Are we looking for what we have with Jev? Or are we looking for either one?
Entirely up to you, that's the ad we have from 1910.
So can each one of us get a copy of it?
Absolutely.
So we'll all have a copy of this RFP that's gonna go out? A S F P? And is there deadlines to that?
We'll have to establish the deadline.
Okay, so.
What was that last time?
I'm gonna think, probably advertised for Philly last time. By the time we get the app. And then we'll go by the deadline of the newspapers.
And how far do we advertise that? Cause I know before it was a little bit limited.
How far are you?
I mean, for these students though. Where do you advertise it?
Where did you advertise last time, you're feeling?
It kinda is a messenger, or something like that, or whatever it was.
The Bank of America?
They put it on the Bank of America website, our website, and then my family members have a website.
Okay, because we wanna give as much opportunity, you know, for the bid as possible, I think, to get the best choice. Alright, I'm sorry we're a little late with opening up for citizens time.
I made the motion, we need a second to vote on that, to put the RFP out.
Second.
All in favor? I'll post. Alright, we are running a little late in the opening time, we'll open that up right now and try to give us the list.
I'll just get a call in, maybe your microphones, because they're having some trouble here and it's there in the back.
Okay, we have one person, Matt McCannan.
For change, I come in peace. Matt McCannan, Charles McCannan, 5732 Valley, Roswellville, Rich Valley. And I just wanna welcome, I'm gonna call by their first name, Lori, Chris. Lori, I think they're gonna be a big asset to this board. I think those of them are a class act, I'm not just trying to build them up because we're sitting here facing each other, but I think they're gonna be two great additions to this board. Chris, I haven't known him long, just named him a few days ago, I know he sits around. But I can tell Chris is a honest man with integrity. He's gonna do a good job as best he can for this county and all the citizens that are here. Forrest, anyway. Lori was an excellent industrial business recruiter. She had the job, it's just they didn't give her any funding to do her job. Which made me think, you know, are we, are the old board when she was working for them, were they really serious about getting businesses come here? You know, I understood her budget was almost nothing, I mean, how can she, she could've gone out of Smith County all the way to go. So I hope this new board will, hopefully, my request is that you hire the best county administrators you can find, if you have to go to Timbo too. You'd hire the best industrial business recruiter that you can find, I think that's gonna be one of the most important positions in this county. We've been going down the wrong trail for a long, long time. This is a point of no return, but I think we can turn it around, it's not gonna happen overnight, and you all know that, you're not gonna, you know, it's gonna get everything done overnight. But we need businesses, we need jobs in this county. Last night's the school board meeting, we got our final numbers on the enrollment for Smith County, a little over 4,100 kids, that's all we got. And you know that our funding for the schools was based on enrollment. So we're something there. Down here, and we're in District 7 of the state as far as schools, school sizes go. And we're the poor section of the state. But when I go to these meetings where all the state school systems are there, especially the one in Williamsburg, we find that we're, you know, Fairfax, Loudoun, some of those counties, Fairfax for instance, our school budget is $1.3 billion with a B. Our school board members make $25,000. Our school budget's gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of $50 million. So, you know, our budget's pocket change to those people. But they're, they're almost can't believe when we tell them what our graduation rates are, what our SOL scores are. And they think, well, how can that poor little old Smith County, and those places down there, how can they beat us on, you know, we got all this money, we got money to burn, you know, and they're beating us, how is that? It's because we got a good, we got a good faculty, we got good administrators, and we try to do everything we can to educate our kids, that's all, basically all we got to offer right now. They're going off to college and they don't come back, there's nothing here for them. Thank God we got a few industries that are hiring kids that wanna go to work. So, you know, our education system is, is probably one of the most important things we have going for our kids right now. And we hope that someday we'll have some jobs here, that they'll come back. You know, a lot of, my daughter was one of the few that went off to college and medical school, and she came back here to practice medicine. Her brother told her she was crazy, you come back to Smith County, she can make twice that much money somewhere else. But she wanted to come home and practice medicine. But that doesn't happen very often, doesn't happen very often. So I hope we change, I hope we turn that around. And I'm so glad, and I'm just looking forward to good things with this, with this new board. I think it's gonna happen. Congratulate Judy on the chairmanship, Lori came right out of the blocks and head chair, that's kind of amazing. But I know she's gonna do a good job. And I hope you can all work together, I know it's kind of a, it's like a split, but you have that sometimes. And on the, on the school board, as far as that's concerned, last night Judy and Chris came to our school board meeting, I thought that was great. We spend most of your county money upstairs. So I think, you know, you all need to come to our school board meetings when you can. And we're gonna come to your meetings when we can. And I hope, and I think, and I know, that our budget committees are gonna be able to work together for a change, we've always had an adversarial relationship since I've been off the school. At times, I didn't even wanna sit down with these guys. And I just, I couldn't, I couldn't even sit down with them, I'm not on the budget committee, but I always try to go. I knew I'd just get mad, so I didn't even go. But I think now, we'll be able to work together and trade ideas back and forth, and we got, we got good opportunities. So I know you're gonna help the schools, I trust you are. Just wanna congratulate you, and pray for you, and looking for great things in Smith County. And one other thing that I just heard about in the last week or few weeks, you know, I couldn't believe. I heard that, and it's came from pretty reliable sources, that Smith County has a tax delinquency somewhere in the neighborhood of $16 million. How did that happen? That goes back, it goes back several years, it goes back to some of you guys. How, how did that happen? $16 million in the wind of taxes. What happened? We could do a lot with that money, I think somebody dropped the ball. I hope you guys can get that straightened out. And one more request, fix the library.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Madam Chair, just a quick minute if I may please. Folks, welcome aboard, I know you've got more to do than you can say, Gray's over. So I'm gonna give you one more thing you need to be aware of.
Thank you.
The federal government requires that you be paying the national agency management system. There are there are two different ways that you can do that, you can take the NIMS 100 class. The reason for this is that local governments must be aware of their roles in a disaster. And everything really starts locally. And they'll be at the end of cities, they know the state will come in to defend it, whatever, but it all goes local, and they come in to resist, not the other way around. In order to be able to obtain federal funds, depending where you are. You must either take the NIMS 100 class, which you can take online, that will take you about four hours. Or you can do as we're doing the FAST, if you would like. I can have a class set up of the NIMS 402, which is a special class for government. That takes about three hours in a classroom, and it'll be taught by the recent Department of Emergency. You can take some time to think about that, but it is something that you do need to get behind you and you can get it in compliance, so it'll be in compliance, and they don't hold up funds for us if someone decides to do some kind of unusual law.
Mr. Chairman, we missed the deadline, let's just complete that.
There's not really a deadline, it just states that, you must
We must do it.
Some, some have got it, so.
Some already have it, okay.
Okay.
So, we need to keep that in mind and
And if you prefer to do it by phone, file, if they were trying, I can get that set up for you, or you can do it by yourself online.
We just need to contact you and get permission, and then we'll, we'll kind of follow the board and see whose interest it may be in which. Thank you so much. Does anyone else wish, wish to speak tonight? We only have one person on that. If not, we'll press citizens time. Emily, I guess you're gonna do the financial study?
I am. There in front of you, you should have a revenue summary and expenditure time, we're unfortunately, we're not able to get that day financially, which is from the treasurer's office, due to the death down the family members on the staff. But we do have a revenue summary, just look at page two there, Fund One, the general fund revenue. Go down to Fund One, the table that was approved, adopted, is $25,780,4. Again, that's just for Fund One. The current amount for January is $7,4,799 $7,4,799.66 for the year-to-date amount of $21,014,841.96, which is 18.49% of revenue uncollected, is that amount. That's just for Fund One, if you go to the next pages, it lists different funds. All the way down to the very bottom, on page six, for all funds. There was a budgeted amount of $89,532, $89,532, $532,432. That was amended to $89,722.89. And the current amount for all funds is $11,556,288.48, with the year-to-date amount of $47,124,554.64, leaving an uncollected balance of $42,597,734.36. With a 47.47% uncollected revenue. The next report is the expenditure summary on page one, Fund One, this is the money that's spent. All county departments and agencies that are funded, under Fund One, if you go to page two, at the very top. Right under comprehensive services act, there's a fund total. The budgeted amount was $25,786. The current amount of expenditures is $10,499,456.66, and a year-to-date amount of $10,681,427.26, leaving an uncovered balance of $15,207,358.74. That is just for Fund One, you can continue all down through the other funds. When you get to the bottom, on page five, the total for all funds. Again, the amended budget is $89,722.289. Current expenditures total, $7,403,661.65, with year-to-date expenditures of $36,615,124.65, with an uncovered balance of $53,107,164.35. Finally, on the last page there, there's a comparison of expenditures by department for January. It does list all departments on the county funds. The total for January 2020 is $1,215,808.93, as compared to $835,724.05 for January 2019. So we actually appropriated and spent $384.88 more this January, as opposed to last January. Then there on the final column, it lists why those differences are, where you see some of these differences. Our total appropriations for the month is $6,695. And as of January 30th, we had a bank balance of $16,768,508.92, which is more than enough to cover those appropriations.
Alright, so, a little bit on to kind of the input. Okay, alright. We have from the general fund, the total appropriation of $2 million. Do we have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? In the post? For social services, there's a total of $125,000.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? For the school operating fund, we have the total of $3,940,000.
That's just for him.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor? For the school debt, $330,000.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? The EDA fund, $10,847.53.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? The sheriff's fund, $10,82.62.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? The heavy court fund, $5,674.20.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Circuit court fund, $347.32.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Madam Chairman, I thought I asked you before, it's time to go down, since we're talking about the accounts payable. If we could move down to the AP check signature assessment, I'd be sure on the additional agenda.
Okay.
We did have an issue with printing the accounts payable checks at the, at the treasurer's office where they were, were signed with Michael Farber's signature on them. They did catch that in time, but it'd already been printed. So they contacted the auditors, and they said, now that's, of course not, not acceptable, and they can't do that. So they have proposed to mark through Mr. Farber's signature, and I'm, and they did check with the Bank of Marion, and I'm an authorized signer, so that I would, I'll manually sign those checks in, in that place, if that's acceptable to the board. Rather than to go through the process of voiding this 225 checks, and having to go and rekey all that information in.
Okay, so, do we have a vote to approve that for Lisa to sign those?
We have two, probably.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, and next on the agenda is Chief Richardson, the Board of Equalization at Land Use.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm before the board this evening because I wanna go ahead and just give the board a very brief status of reassessment that's currently going on at this point in time. The contract was signed in June 2018, that went out in the field in October 18, to reassess my company that was hired by the Board of Supervisors. We're nearing that end because the official date of that reassessment is January 1st of this year. Currently, the field work by Pearson's, the contracted company, has been completed, they've visited every property in Smith County. They're currently finishing up the building permits. And they will tentatively, as of now, they will be mailing at the end of this month. They also have obtained, which is obligated from myself and other sources like MLS and so forth, they have sales information as to what sales are arms-length, which ones are not, so that they can make an analysis in coming to what their determination is, if there should be any change whatsoever. After the mailing goes out, every citizen has an opportunity to appeal. That's just a part of our system. What our office is obligated to do is to try to make sure that the assessment process goes as smoothly as possible on a day-to-day basis after they're out in the field. I'm happy to say that Pearson's has done a great job, I think our office has had, and not really anyone complaining, we've done anything but less. But what we've had is people inquiring about situation of who is this, is this person authorized value? Or they make us aware of stats of their property. Every citizen has an opportunity to appeal, what we have done is, the first step of that is called the Board of Assessors. The location of the Board of Assessors will be in the ground level of courthouse when you walk into the left-hand side, through doorway near the elevator. We already have offices set up, the phone system is, the phones are there. We're having some issues with the sound of phones, but hopefully that's gonna be resolved. We've already gone out and with the assistance of Lisa, who I'd like to thank, we have found a secretary that's already been obtained to work for the company, to be able to set up appointments for citizens to be able to come in. We hope that she'll be trained next week. The one thing that I wanna mention to the board, as far as what your obligation is, this process, is that the second component of the appellate process is called Board of Equalization. The Board of Equalization, as always, and I believe by code, recommended to a circuit court judge by the Board of Supervisors, and appointed by the judge. I would recommend for the BOE that we can have either three or five, every year that we've had a Board of Equalization, which is made up of five citizens in Smith County, we've always had five, we can have three or five, I would recommend five, with one alternative. The board also will need to establish, I believe, the time, which is normally, has always been going through this, the end of this year, 2020. And the BOE, Board of Equalization, will meet intermittently as needed, depending upon how many citizens are appealing. By code, two of those members have to have professional credentials. They have to be a banking, a real estate appraiser, or be involved in the real estate industry, such as selling those stuff. That can sometimes be challenging, so what I've gone out and done, and will share with Madam Chairperson and other members, and will have, be free to discuss with anyone individually, I've gone out and spoken to a number of individuals who have professional credentials, who have graciously agreed to be able to serve. That can be a dawning task in finding someone, I spoke to someone in Department of Taxation, and I said I'd prefer to have five, and she was skeptical that we could do so. At this point, I feel confident that that's not gonna be a challenge, but that is at the expression of the board. That's what we're looking at, as far as our stats. I have several of these, and I wanna mention and give this also to the board members, while I have a hard opportunity. These are frequently asked questions by the citizens, and I want to go ahead and share this with the board members now, because the general thing I've found out is, when you have a reassessment, your phone rings. A lot. And what this sheets do is, they provide the basic information, so the board members will be able to share, plus I'm also planning on getting this, and other things through the news media, as needed. Also, I'd like to share that if there's any civic group that wishes for me to come through and go through the process, so that the public is aware of what their rights are in the appellate process, I'll be happy to do so. If you look at this, it answers questions like, why are we having assessment? Who does it? When will they receive their letters? How does the company arrive at values? Can I appeal? How do I appeal, and so forth? It's basic information that every citizen should have, and we wanna provide that. The last thing I need to discuss with the board is a pressing issue for my office. And that is land use. We have land use, and have had land use since the 1970s, and I mailed this letter to all board members about a week ago, plus we sent it by email. And I wanted to go ahead, does everyone have what I provided, or I can give you one of these? Is there anyone who needs one?
Let me, let me have one, I can't put my hands on it right away. Thank you.
What this basically goes through and discusses is that in land use in Smith County, what occurs is, whenever we have a reassessment, individuals have to sign back up for more land use at that point in time. What we have done, I'm sorry, what we have done in land use six years ago was something that never has been done in Smith County. We did a mass mailing of individuals who were in the program, and that worked fabulously. It meant, because what's gonna end up happening is this. The courthouse has security currently, we have courts and everything else. We're gonna have people appealing the reassessments. They're gonna have to go through a security because of the logistics. If we only have 5% of the properties appealed, that's 1,000 people coming in the courthouse, on top of the normal traffic. If we don't do a mass mailing, that means we're gonna have around another 1,500 coming into the courthouse. Just to reapply for the land use, which does not include people doing their state taxes, federal taxes, you get the picture. It will become overwhelming. What this is going to do, and has done, in this mass mailing, which we did six years ago, that was fabulous. The advantages of that mass mailing, and what we have to do is pass the special ordinance, we wanna do two things, which we've always done. Code says it's 30 days, we're allowed to take it to 90 days for the application period. Second thing is, is that we're asking that the fee for land use is set up in $20, plus 10 cents per acre, I think it's over 50 is what the original ordinance says. We just wanna make it a flat $15 fee. The advantage of that is, it simplifies us doing the mass mailing, but we're still basically arriving at the same amount of money and revenue end-of-counting because of costs. The advantages of it is this, it does allow us to do the mass mailing, simplifies the process, reduces costs and improves efficiency tremendously, because people are able to sit down at their table, think about it, talk with their spouse. Plus, for the taxpayer who's on a track road in Rich Valley, or Sugar Grove, or Saltwood, or Chilhawley, he doesn't have to occupy half a day coming in to our office and sitting there for 35 minutes for somebody to go up the form with him. All he has to do is review it, because we're taking his information that he had from the previous application. It also reduces confusion, and as I said, it reduces the number of taxpayers. They passed the emergency ordinance, if you look at the information I gave you six years ago. Ms. Clayton, at that point in time, told board, you know, you need to do this on a permanent basis, I don't know whether the board didn't wanna do it, or it would be very easy to just, you know, there's so many things going to just for it to be missed and not done. For that reason, I'm back here requesting that the board pass this ordinance, as they did, the special ordinance, I should say, and then later change the ordinance to this format, unlike this, not that I did six years ago, so that we can go ahead and do this. And, and we, I went ahead and chaired some of this with Mr. Farber, and I've also sent this all to you. Timing is an issue, notices are gonna be sent out in January. We want to also be able there soon afterwards, to be able to do this mass mailing to the taxpayers. It's gonna, it's gonna simplify it so much more for us to be able to do that. So for that reason, we're a little late to this thing, you might say. And I would urge this board to either honor this, pass it this evening, or meet prior to the next meeting, actually prior, hopefully, to February 1st. actually prior hopefully to February 1st, so that we can have it passed and I can go ahead and do my mass mailing. We're doing all the preparation at this point in time in my office to go ahead and expedite this. It just makes everyone's lives, and it's for cost of benefit.
So when we spoke briefly about this, there was a question of would we have to have a special public hearing? And I never got a response. Mr. Farthing, is there a requirement for that?
If you pass an emergency ordinance and pass the ordinance tonight, you'll have to set a public hearing to let the public know and then readopt the ordinance at the public hearing.
Is that for a special one, or is that for the regular ordinance?
That's for regular emergency ordinance. So I don't know that I can answer that directly today without looking at the code section to make sure.
Right. 15.2, 14.27.
Right, that's in the package, right?
And the, I think in the minutes a number of years ago, Mr. Farthing.
Yes, sir.
They did not do so, they did not do it. And if you look at the third paragraph, and I know you haven't had an adequate amount of time to look at this, it was the emergency ordinance in that section 15.2 dash 14.27, but I don't want to.
If it was passing the pass as a special ordinance before, you know, and there was no issue, I would say you probably do it again. I just, you know, don't want to give an opinion one way or the other and be wrong or whatever, slow things down when the commissioner needs some action by the board.
Would it be possible to do so and then check the wood leagues? I know that's not quite the way we normally do it.
You can, I mean, if you're saying February 1st is the date, I believe the intent of the board is to recess for about two weeks and then come back at another meeting.
Is there going to be another meeting prior to the February 1st?
I think so. I think they're going to recess a week or two weeks. And if that meets your need, that would give me time to review it and advise the board.
That would work for us.
Okay. So I think we just take it up to the recess meeting, just hold it on the agenda and then let me give you a memo or report on what we can do.
One quick question, if I may. On my sheet here is number three, now therefore, the event is following. Number three, you asked to have that removed, is that still?
Yes, we want that removed, and I'll tell you why. We want to go ahead and get everything completed, get all of our paperwork done, and I can tell you, it says number three, that it extends it for somebody who would have to pay double. In that period of time, we had one individual, six years ago, that's the, we only have one individual because we're extending, we're extending it 90 days, which is three times what the county of Illinois says. We actually keep track of everybody. We actually, my apologies, we actually keep track of those and send out reminder cards because we don't want anybody to miss this, and we're constantly just monitoring this the whole time we're on the trip.
Is there any further discussion, board members? Any other questions?
Chairman, move the table, this is going to shake the meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
The next item is back at the Dragon Project, by Kelly Wood.
Members of the board, as most of you are aware, we have been working on the Back of the Dragon Project now for quite a while. I'm happy to say it is advertised. I had the approval from VDOT to go ahead and advertise. I had spoken to Hurtin' Profit, they've given their okay on that too, so that will go in the newspaper on the 18th and the 25th. There's a pre-bid conference that will be held on January the 22nd at 10:00 a.m. That's where the engineers and VDOT and everyone will be available to answer any questions that may be out there on the project. And then we will move at that point, once we get all the bits together, see where the project goes.
Okay, any discussion or questions?
The only other thing I have on that, just so everyone knows, that's an 80/20 project. 80% of the funds come from a grant from VDOT, 20% comes from the Tobacco Commission. Michael Carter was our signature on that. I can't sign because I'm the one requesting the money from Tobacco Commission, so we have to have our checks and balances. I need your direction on who you would like to place on that form in order to sign and get reimbursement back for grant money. I would like to have it. I have money, I need to request now. So Lisa could do it. I would also like to have another person on there because someone's usually always not available, so it keeps me to be able to not delay my request to the Tobacco Commission a pretty particular way.
What's the plan for the board?
I don't see a reason why Lisa couldn't do it.
Bet she needs another one.
I would like to have two if possible. Lisa most definitely, if we can, to go ahead and sign now.
Can the chair do it?
It is up to the board that when I spoke to the Tobacco Commission, it is up to us to say this is who we place their.
If I may make a comment, our last thing on the agenda is the county administrative position advertisement, and I think we're going to talk about a temporary feeling for that. If we have a temporary administrator, I think that person could be the other signature.
We would have to change it again if they're not there currently, but we would just have to go back through that process and resubmit the forms to Tobacco Commission.
Whatever the plan is, the board is.
Madam Chairman, I'm fine with Lisa and you. You're going to be signing documents anyway, but there'd be a motion I'd make, or I'd be willing to make.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you, Kelly.
Madam Chair, if I could, just for a moment, I need to let you know I've got to step out for another commitment this evening. Mr. Martin's here on the front row. I need to step out and speak with him just for a few minutes, and he can take my place unless the board wants to take a recess for five minutes, but.
Let me take five.
Yes, we'll take the five minutes. Thank you.
Yeah, I hope so, too.
I need to go through this, everybody can go home. We'll continue with additional agenda, and that is Legislative Day information from Kelly.
Every year, VACO, along with several other organizations, come together and offer what's called Legislative Day, which is a day that local government bodies can go to the Capitol and to delegate certain type of people. In past, the group has went, they've not stayed in line, they've traveled up and back the same day, they've scheduled meetings with delegates and that type of thing to discuss their passions, or whatever they choose to do with the people up there. We have been given an invitation by VEA. If anyone chooses to go to Legislative Day, they have invited you all to the dinner. It's February the 6th, which is the day for that Legislative Day, and the dinner is from 7:00 to 10:00 at the Capitol Hill House.
Can we just move to the dinner?
It's a meet and greet type thing.
Did they go up and back on the same day?
That's what they've chosen to do in the past. VACO does offer a reduced room rate if someone chooses to stay. I can tell you from previous experience, they've not done that in the past. They've taken a county vehicle and went up. Last year, I think it was, were you having maybe, Lisa, do you remember? I can't remember, there's usually not very many that honestly go.
So to get information on that.
VACO should have sent you all an email, you're on the mailing list, so they would have sent you that information. I would have gotten the same email, I'll be glad to forward it to you if you didn't get it.
Yeah, I did.
That's something that they've actually just, Mr. Carter as the county administrator has taken upon himself to facilitate. He's taken that lead. VACO wants you to pay a fee to do this conference with them and attend certain sessions there with them. They, Michael and the group that went with him, and everyone in the past has chosen to just do it on their own and go meet the delegates and that type of stuff.
Okay, now do we go through you for the reservations, or?
You're more than welcome to.
And so is there a deadline that you need that in by?
I would have to look and see there is. I'm not certain when that is, it's approaching, I can tell you that because we're almost at the end of January, so.
Yes.
Because it's the 24th.
Okay, so that's not too far.
I'm taking it with them the next week, yeah.
Okay, so if you would mind, kind of send us a mail or whatever with that, or let us know.
Madam Chairman, if we decide to not do the VACO part, I'm very familiar with many of the legislators there, and I know their aides well, so I'm happy to coordinate the trip because I do plan to go, so I'm happy to.
And I do need an RCT for this, Josh Lewis, I don't know if you guys know him or not, he's with VEA, he has asked for an RCT for this dinner, so if you choose to go.
My schedule takes me in Richmond on the 5th for another board meeting, so I could easily stay over and partake of this event on the 6th.
Okay, so Lisa, you'll get the, I mean, Kelly will get the information.
I'll be fine to email it tomorrow.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, is the consideration of resolution to support an increase in state funding for small and rural schools? That's Kathy Smith.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Pull that so I can read it. Kathy Smith, 149, Christopher Drys, Chilhawley. I'm also the District A, Virginia Education Association President, have been interim president in the Dorman County, but I have a resident in Smith County. Been involved, I have been involved with the Small and Rural Schools Coalition for several years now from its inception, and the first meeting, initial meeting was in Whitwell in December of 2017, where a number of the superintendents and different people got together and talked about what we needed for small and rural schools, because we always seem to be short-changed on funding for schools. So this coalition has come together, and we are working, you know, looking with the VEA, we're looking with our legislators, whomever that we can pull in to have a louder voice here in Virginia. I know Mr. McKenna spoke about Region 7. Well, Region 7 has the best SOL scores in the state. We have done the most with the least. Well, it's time to stop. So this is what this resolution is about. And the, yes, last evening, Dr. Carter read it to his board, and they passed it unanimously. And I have left the changes of what Dr. Carter added pertaining to Smith County, and I would like to read this, the pleasure of the board to read this to you for a passage, and we, the Small School, Small and Rural Schools Coalition is now full. When it started out, there weren't but about 40 or so divisions that were in. Now it's over 80, and it's growing. It's all over the state, mostly, of course, here in southwest Virginia, because we are very rural. When you hit pass grown up, it's rural, rural schools. Any questions on that? I can go ahead and read this. Part of the VEA statement, and I will talk, some talking points, you know, the past few years, we have had to read for Ed. Last year, on our lobby day of January 28th, we had over 5,000 people that were at the Capitol, in the rolling steps of the Capitol, and we had a rally for education because funding is critical. There were a lot of areas at risk funding, just for rural schools because of, and you'll hear it when I talk about, read the resolution, what one cent tax dollars as compared to one cent to tax dollars in maybe Loudoun County or whatever up the road, that are funded quite a bit. I believe Mr. McKenna said their budgets are billions of dollars, you know, not millions. Ours is just a pocket, like you said, pocket change. So this is, what we're doing is all join together so we will have more voices so Richmond would hear us. Richmond is hearing us, but we need to continue to be louder. On Sunday, Senator Pilligan sent me a copy of an article that was in the Richmond Times, that him and Senator, Senator J. Jones wrote regarding funding with small and rural schools and how we are short-changed. So if you get a chance to read that, or I'll be glad to share it with you later, I do have a copy of it. At this time, let me read this to you for the resolution and ask for you all to please pass it tonight. It will be a louder voice. I am going to present it to Washington County Schools, hopefully on the 20th, and then on the 28th, we'll be presenting it to Washington County Board Supervisors. So we will have more voices here in southwest, and I believe some of the other divisions throughout Russell County, Buchanan, and so forth are doing the same thing. So they're going to hear us in Richmond. We need the money. The resolution to support an increase in state funding for small and rural school divisions. Whereas, Virginia's unemployment rate is the lowest it has been in recent history at 2.8%, as Smith County's unemployment rate is 3.4%. And whereas, Virginia has been recognized as the top state in America to do business. And whereas, Virginia has been designated as the 10th wealthiest state in America. And whereas, Virginia has finished with a significant budget surplus last year of $230 million. And whereas, over half of Virginia's schools and 12 of 14 Smith County schools were built over 50 years ago. Whereas, when inflation is accounted for, state per pupil funding is down 8% from pre-Great Recession levels despite a significant improvement in Virginia's economy. And whereas, Virginia ranks 32nd in per pupil funding nationally. Whereas, per pupil spending varies widely across Virginia from $11,919 in Smith County to $20,000 in some suburban districts, and the statewide average in per pupil spending trails the national average by about $1,800 per student. And whereas, Virginia's teachers are paid more than $9,000 less than the national average, which ranks 30, which ranks us 35th. And whereas, since the Great Recession, localities have increased their share of funding public education by 2.9 percentage points, while the state has decreased their share by 3.3 percentage points. And whereas, in Virginia's rural schools, where localities have been the least post-recession, have seen the least post-recession growth, those numbers are even worse. Rural localities have increased their share of education funding by 3.9 percentage points, and the state has decreased their funding by rural, to rural schools by 4.4 percentage points. And whereas, the national average for the additional funding for high-poverty students has been estimated between 20% and 29%, and Virginia caps this funding stream at 16%. And whereas, the research is clear that teaching students whose families live in poverty is more expensive than providing education to students with affluent families. And whereas, when all funding resources are considered, Virginia spends less on average on per pupil education in high-poverty districts than the rest of the country. And whereas, small and rural stakeholders believe that pre-K through 12 public education is critical to the vitality of their region and to the Commonwealth as a whole. And whereas, rural school divisions have seen a decline in K through 12 enrollment of almost 24,000 students since 2009, which represents an 8% decline, as Smith County has experienced a 787-student decline during the same time period. And whereas, 16% of the students in rural school divisions live below the poverty level. And whereas, 48% of the students in rural school divisions and 76.9% of Smith County students are eligible for free or reduced-priced lunch. And whereas, these rural localities have the ability to pay only 19,940, excuse me, back up, the ability to raise only $19,441,000, and Smith County to raise only $140,100 by increasing property taxes by one penny. And whereas, over 80 school divisions across the Commonwealth could be defined as rural or small. And whereas, local property and tax revenues prevent rural localities from funding schools at the same level as affluent localities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Smith County Board of Supervisors ask the Commonwealth of Virginia to adopt a budget that increases teacher pay to ensure we are able to keep and hire the best talent, increases at-risk add-on. and hire the best talent, increases at-risk add-on, either through the VDOE's proposed equity fund or in its current form, provide state funding for school construction and renovation, and reinstate the enrollment loss funding stream. Hopefully will be adopted this day, January 14th, till 2020. Are there any questions?
Madam Chairman, if I may make a point, thank you for sharing this with us. I certainly think this is something that we should get behind, and Senator Pilliam has been supportive of this as well. I just want to comment on the fact of how important pre-K through 12 education is, particularly how it plays an entire workforce. And the number-one thing that companies look at when they are moving to a locality is workforce. We can have the nicest site, we can have the nicest building, we can have $10 million in grant funding to help them, but if we don't have workforce, they're not coming. And pre-K is where it starts, and I think it's important, and I'll make a motion to adopt this resolution.
You have a motion, any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you very much. I will say that the Virginia Education Association, well, all of us are, we're livid with the governor right now because he proposed, we asked for 5 percent teacher raises this year and next year. He proposed 3 percent teacher raise in the second year. The cost, inflation is 4.28 percent is what is being predicted. We're just falling further behind. There are amendments to the budget. I believe it's Senator Vogel is one of them, and the 5 percent in the first year, and I think Senator Chayton is also going to be on the back of this to, we're asking for the 5 percent in the second year. So any other information or any questions, anything, just let me know. I'd be glad to share it with Senator Pilliam and Senator Jones.
Unbelievable numbers.
It's shocking. Something that, I did a lot of research through the Commonwealth Institute, and one of the things that I have stressed and I have pushed this with localities, you invest in your educators, you invest in education, whatever it is, pre through, you know, pre-K through 12. When you invest in that education, your return is going to be five to one or 10 to one or more. I mean, you invest in that education. You know, we have teachers, and you all know this, we have teachers that'll work in second and third jobs. They can't dedicate 110 percent in the classroom when they do that.
At that school board meeting last night, it was very enlightening. I would encourage each one, as we have time, to attend some of those meetings because it's information that we don't always get. And to hear their voices and to hear their concerns is very empowering to us to know.
Exactly, exactly. I mean, there's the one teacher, like, she was just about in tears because she has to work another job, and she comes in, she can't give her kids the, you know, 110 percent that we want to make sure that our children are taught and that we're there for them. And with what we're having to deal with now, with these kids that go through trauma and everything else, you know, we're having children, we're seeing the children that are, that are born with dependency on drugs or alcohol, you know. It's sad. It's sad, but we're facing more and more and more. I never, in my years of teaching, thought that I would be facing, having a child that would have a meltdown in a classroom because they don't know how to deal with what's happening at home. And I'm having to be counselor. I'm having to be mom, et cetera. But thank you all very much. We will continue to.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I have a quick question for Ms. Smith, if possible. Does your organization or association, do they have access to resources to look at what some of the cutting-edge technology is out there in the world and try to bring that back as a study curriculum for our students? What I'm alluding to is solar energy. That's, that's the rage. Have we, or, no, I'm sorry, I don't want to include myself in that. Have you all ever looked at a platform somewhere to bring a, start a pilot project and then expand it to teach, to have these kids develop the skills and the knowledge to participate in a solar program from manufacturing to running to repairing and everywhere in between?
That needs to be done. I do know with the Small and Rural Schools Coalition, I believe it was last summer, went to a symposium in Charlottesville, and there was a solar energy company that was there. There was a building company that would build the, you know, green, so-called green buildings. We had other people that were there from all facets that would bring into our rural schools healthcare with, at a school. There were, there were a lot of things. And but, yeah, solar, in fact, Delegate Hurst introduced legislation to Appalachian Power Service to be part of a pilot program, which allows schools to credit excess wind power or solar power to renewable energy to metered accounts of one or more other schools with the same school division. This would provide schools with a credit against the amount billed to other schools within the division and in the amount excess generated. Dominion does it. Appalachian Power does not. They will not even look at it right now. So I would like for Chris Hurst to flip this bill. It was House, it was House Bill 1869, the Delegate, Delegate Hurst put through, and it was shot down. And I do have a copy of that bill, too. I'd be glad to share it with you.
Yes, ma'am. I would be interested in looking at that.
There's, there's a lot of opportunity out there to help these schools, you know. I mean, we have schools, I know, I mean, this past summer, I had traveled through the coalfields and saw schools that were closed down, that were dilapidated, that had leaking roofs or had tarps over roofs, or, you know, they didn't have, didn't have heating or cooling, you know, sufficient for them. Met in places that, you know, were not fit for a child or anybody to be in. I do know in Lee County, there are schools that have leaky roofs and the kids have to dodge the leaks in the roof when they go to class. Or they have trash cans sitting out in the rooms that are catching the water. And this is not just Lee County, it's our rural and small and rural schools that these, these travesties are happening. And it's because funding has not come down from the state for us to help us with our capital improvement projects. And the schools, you know, you have, you've lost all that job loss, you don't have the revenue. And that was something else that I do, I do know there is some more money that's coming to the stores to help the small and rural schools. That's just not, that's just a, you know, drop in the bucket of what's needed because of our antiquated schools. I mean, I've, I've seen some pitiful sights.
Okay, thank you.
It's a great resolution, Mr. McKenna. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all very, very much.
Okay, next on the agenda is the budget demand request by Kelly.
Madam Chairman, in your agenda, starting on page 29, there are several requests for budget transfers. And I know some of you maybe question why they're on the agenda, and the county administrators have permission to transfer internally up to $4,000 for each department. Well, we have, as you all know, we don't have a county administrator. So these will be bills, I mean, transfers that will allow me to continue to process the pay issues without overdrawing and making remined items, incorrect in the budget. So the first one is from the Sheriff's Department. They are asking to transfer $700 from Sheriff's Office renovations, which is actually in Fund 744, into Fund 10210, excuse me, 0710705103. $700.
I'll move it.
Can I ask, may I ask a question? I know this is probably elementary, but I noticed that it's for the water bill. I would assume that the water usage is probably...
I think, honestly, if I remember correctly, they had a leak. They've had a problem there. That's what Ken Medley told me from the Sheriff's Department.
I was told by the sheriff yesterday morning that their water bill's been about the same all year.
So I couldn't tell you.
I just want us to be mindful, whoever does the budget, I mean, the sheriff has bigger fish to fry than worrying about transferring $700 to pay the water bill. I just wanted to throw that out there, but yes, I'm in favor of transferring that.
Because we don't have a county administrator like you.
Well, even if we did, it's...
We didn't know that.
A water bill at my house is typically the same amount every month. So when I do my personal budget, I say, this comment's rotating aside for a water bill. There's, we should not have to transfer to the water bill line item, is, I guess, not what that means.
Any other discussion?
I don't think that was for one month, huh?
That's to finish out the year.
Okay.
Yes, that'll be for the next year.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Kelly.
The next one is also for the Sheriff's Department. As you all are aware, they have certain positions that are funded through the Compensation Board, and if there's a vacancy, they are allowed to use that money and move it to do certain things within their budget. So they are asking to use $4,169. I'm going to take the 25 cents off there because we don't deal against with our budget. So I'm going to ask that you guys move $4,169, it'll be from their salary line item, 0210701001, into their vehicle maintenance, which is 0210706408. This is a big line item for the sheriff that he utilizes quite frequently to take care of his fleet there at the department. So they are asking to do that.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
The next one comes to you from the Water Department, from the Animal Control Department. They need to transfer money from their animal controls and supplies, 0350105420, into shelter upgrades. We have budgeted for them to be able to get the isolation panels that they need in order to, we've got a plan to do those in order to pass inspection. It keeps germs and feces and stuff like that from being passed from kennel to kennel there in the animal shelter. So they, and from the time we got the cloaks till now, it's a winnable. So he's asking for $500 to be able to do that.
I'll move it to approve.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Madam Chairman, while I'm already up here, may I go ahead and address the budget deadline? In past, we have put out a small ad in the paper that solicits your budgets from outside agencies. There's also a form on the website if anybody gets the question from, I've had three or four so far, as to a unified form that they can fill out to submit a budget request to Smith County. We typically do it in February, so I'm just asking for your direction on that. Last year, it was February the 15th at 5:00. That allows for, hopefully, the compilation of all the information into certain spreadsheets so you guys, whomever and however you choose to do the budget cycle, can look at the information and have it all in one unified form. So that allows for that to take place. So I have suggested February the 14th at 5:00 to have all of the budgets sent to the office.
So that gives them that, basically?
About a month, yes. And I'll put a small ad in the paper so everybody, the outside organizations and such can see.
And from working with budgets under that's pretty typical.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion for that?
I'll move it. A second.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chairman, if I may make a comment, I'm not sure if, if Mr. Nichols is going to put this in the newspaper, but one thing I would like to encourage folks to do, I'm sure you've had feedback from this, if you all have input for the budget, now is the time to do it. Don't wait until June when we go to approve the budget, because at that point, a lot of decisions have already been made. So if anybody has input or questions, now is the time to start asking those questions, because when we vote on it, it's almost too late to go back and change.
Well, and from working with budgets from the county agency, I know it's really important to give as much explanatory detail as possible. Because that helps the budget community and the whole board of experts.
And a lot of the times, these, you're looking at just a proposal from Jingo, and if they don't give us enough detail, I can't answer, Lisa couldn't answer, what, what's this for? Where's it going? Is it a grant match? That sort of thing. So it gives you enough information to be able to make a decision on it.
An important decision, yes. That's very important, because it can mean the difference from being funded or not being funded. Because there's so much competition for this dollar.
I'd also encourage folks to include economic impact that their organizations may have. That's certainly something that should be considered.
So, is there a motion? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
And Lisa, I guess you're next.
Yes, on page 33 of your agenda, you'll note in the letter, some of the zoning is going to start to take over again with some concerns about the Board of Zoning Appeal There are 10 positions total, seven of those are district-specific, so each district should appoint someone in their district, or should have already appointed someone in their district. And then there's three alternates that are non-district, for a total of 10. Right now, we have two appointments. We've had resignations, we've had some that have not been sworn in. So right now, we really only have two that are, have gone through the process and are okay to move forward. Atkins District, their representative resigned, Roll Oak needs a reappointment or sworn in, I think those is about to expire. Park District is okay. Chilhawee, Ry Valley, and Saltwood needs to be, there are some people, I believe, already in position there, but maybe they need a new recommendation, a reappointment to be sworn in. Part of the issue is, they, it has to be the oath or has to take place through an attorney and then go to the court for it to be appointed and sworn in there, and that's part of the process, it hasn't happened. Let's see, and I think three alternates, we've had one resign and two that need to be recommended and reappointed or sworn in. So there's just some action that needs to be taken there. The Board of Zoning Appeal, I don't know if that's something you want to do tonight. If you want to send that to a committee, although I, Clay did express that he thought there might be an urgency, that there might be an issue that's going to come up relatively soon, you know, to get that many people appointed and sworn in, and it might take some time to do that.
I know that we're going to have to have a second meeting. Also, Lisa, I would like to have an updated listing of who resigned and what districts need the appointment. Talk a little bit about the rest of the board, any other comments?
Madam Chairman, if I may, in seeing that this appointment wasn't going to be on our agenda, I did a little bit of research because I wanted to see if the person in my district was good to go. When I contacted Mr. Williams' office, I did learn that he did not have documentation for Mr. Dan Sturgill, who's in the Ry Valley District. I had him do some research today, and I believe he is good to go, and he has taken his oath. But I also checked the others, just out of curiosity. I know you mentioned the Park District is good with Mr. Saunders, and the Chilhawee District is good until the end of this month with Mr. Ken Davidson. I'm a little bit concerned because of the other districts that have not been taken care of properly, only because right now we have three people that are, that are there legally on that board, and if we have, tomorrow morning we had an issue that arise, unfortunately, we don't have the people in place that could hear that. So I don't necessarily want to put this off for too long. It apparently has been like this for a couple of years, I'm not sure why it's not been addressed before now, but I certainly believe we need to get this taken care of.
I agree. I do think, however, that we do need some time to speak with people who might be willing to serve, and so I don't think all of us are prepared to do that this evening. However, you are. So I would recommend that we put those in the quality of our next meeting, that that needs to be approved by the other board members.
Madam Chairman, may I ask a question? Does the North Fork District should have representatives sworn in and ready to go?
North Fork, I was told, is okay.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because you said you only had a couple, and I agree with you, Madam Chairman, it needs some thought.
I'd like to make a comment, I don't mean to sound bad, but when I came on the board four years ago, I appointed someone to this board who I thought was a good member. He was enthusiastic about being on the board, attended a couple of meetings, about a year About a year ago, a year and a half ago, he received a notice from the state that he had, he had a fine for not filing any, one of his forms that he should have filed with the state, which he had not been notified he needed to file. Did some research and found out he had not been notified, because he'd never been told to go take the oath to be sworn in. So, he had a, he had a, I believe it was $250 fine for a position he'd never been sworn into. The paperwork got dropped. If you're gonna ask people to do volunteer work, we gotta make sure we're crossing all of our Ts and not our Hs.
Okay.
Yeah, we do need to make sure of this.
And he's still in the vice, it's gonna be hard for me to find some right now.
Well, obviously, we have some work to do on this, and we can get it resolved, I hope, by our next meeting, and have some good quality people to take those places.
So, just to clarify, the Saltville District, the Royal District, and the Atkins District, and then the three alternate members also?
Yes.
Two of them have been, they were recommended several years ago, but never officially appointed or sworn in. And then the other alternate member, Mr. Henderson, he quit because of a similar issue that Mr. Atkins just shared.
And part of that is a conflict of interest, which we'll be talking, getting on here. Madam Chairman.
All right. Okay, Lisa, I think you're next, also, statement of economic interest filing.
Okay. On the next page, page 34, you all, I believe, received this email from Kelly on behalf of the Ethics Council. Again, it is in 2020 Conflict of Interest filing period, which runs from January 1st to February 3rd. This year only, the filing deadline is February 3rd for all forms. Kelly did email forms, and if you didn't receive those, please let us know, and we'll make sure you get those.
There's one in her packet, isn't there?
Yeah, in my packet.
Not the form you gotta fill out. It's 25-page form you gotta fill out.
The email states to instruct all your followers to complete and sign the required disclosure form and return it to you no later than Monday, February 3rd. So, when you do submit these, they do need to be returned to us. And the Board of Supervisor members have to complete a statement of economic interest. And I'll just note, since we were talking about the Board of Zoning Appeals, members, if you notice up there at the top, page 35, they have to do a real estate disclosure. So, theoretically, these people that we have listed as members should be supplying this real estate disclosure by February 3rd. The filing period covers the prior calendar, January 1, 2019, to December 31, 2019, and there is a $250 late filing penalty for statements of economic interest received after February 3rd. So, it's very critical that you get that completed and submit it. If we have any late filers of the Statement of Economic Interest Form, it states that it is your responsibility to provide, I mean, just the county, to provide a listing of those filers to your Commonwealth Attorney, and that office is responsible for assessing the $250 late fee filing penalty for failure to complete that before the February 3rd deadline. Neither your requirement to compile and send the list of late filers nor the Commonwealth Attorney's requirement to assess and collect the binding discretionary, it is required. As I was saying, the points of interest, once again, the council is providing all this disclosure forms in a fillable PDF format. Filers can use Adobe Acrobat to type their forms as opposed to handwriting all necessary information, yet they prefer, they may steal print the blank form and complete it by hand. However, you may not electronically sign it, just have to have your original handle and signature for it to be deemed complete. And that's pretty much it.
So, we need to make sure we get those in, so we don't get a fine of $50. And before February 3rd.
Before February 3rd.
Okay. And if you don't, if you didn't get it in your packet, you have... Okay. Any questions? All right. The next item is county administrator position advertisement, Lisa.
I have this on the agenda just again, just to ask permission and authorization to advertise the vacant county administrator's position, as well as some discussion on how you block that advertising, where we, we do it with our local papers, Paper Smith County's Messenger. We also use Baco and VML. There is the option of doing a full-size Sunday paper, or on a time Sunday paper, they can be somewhat expensive, but we can do that if that's a favorite board. I don't have an ad ready, but I'm gonna get that ad, and let's submit it to everybody for approval before, before we do. I do have a draft, but I'm gonna continue to come and get some ideas, if there's anything that this one wants to add, and get that in the papers soon as possible.
So, could we have a copy of that draft, like post haste, and people can review it and maybe make some recommendations on it? Would that be available maybe, maybe by tomorrow, Lisa?
I should be able to get it tomorrow. Thursday noon is the, is the paper deadline, for Smith County's Messenger, I don't know about the others, but yeah, should be able to do that, look to tomorrow.
How about some more discussion, because this is gonna be a very important position for us. Sometimes just locally, we might not get the whole netting of qualified applicants. So, in the past, were you, done like the more extended advertising?
The most we have done, to my recollection, have been, we did post a Sunday ad in the Roman time, the British paper. I don't recall what the position was. But that's been done a number of years ago. Of course, we know this is the first time we've had that order advertised for county administrator. Certainly, I've been, any suggestions, you know, have any ideas?
May I make a comment? A lot of folks use Indeed, and LinkedIn. Certainly, LinkedIn is a good resource, because folks have their resumes already uploaded, and it kind of pulls information to mix targeted ads for those folks who may be interested in those positions. Not sure if there's a cost associated with that.
I was gonna ask you if there was a fee. I would have to...
Mr. Colson, any other comments?
Is that Baco, Mr. Richardson, mentioned that statewide? They go statewide in the...
That is. Baco and VML, yeah, they have a pretty looking government...
It's extensive.
...get presence, yes. And I think anyone looking for a county's position, those resources are certainly gonna check.
So, is there a budget form, this type of thing, recruiting?
We do have advertising budget, budget right now, I couldn't tell you what the funds that we have in there. Again, I know a lot of times, they, they can get fairly expensive, especially if you get a Sunday air. I'm gonna check about it a little bit in there.
Okay. Do you want to include that with the information that goes tomorrow? What other discussions do you all have about this, because it's such an important issue?
I think we need to, it's not quite the same thing, but I think we need to get some, some help, maybe allow our chairman, or you and Lisa together, to execute a contract with Mount Rogers or someone, Plante District, to give us some help for a while in that position. Lisa's been overwhelmed here the last few weeks. I think we could get Mount Rogers to step in and help us a little bit.
Is that in the form of a motion, Charlie?
Yes, I might get one of them.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chairman, if I may, just...
Who you got in mind?
Mount Rogers.
No certain person.
Over there, sign. Should it likely be like a circuit rider, Kelly?
Yeah, I'm on that board, yeah. You give it a go? Yeah, sure.
Okay, so, we have a motion and a second?
It's an interim, 10:30. Yeah, we get it.
Yes.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. All in favor? Any opposed?
Madam Chairman, I need to abstain, because Mount Rogers Plain District Commission is my employer, although I am contracted just part-time, and this would have nothing to do with what I do, so, but due to conflict of interest, I don't want...
I'm in the same position, I'm on the executive board.
Right. I just want to make that clear.
I can release this there. All right. So, we have closed session, but we also have supervisor comment time. I know this has been a long meeting, do you all wanna, the supervisor comment time, and then jump to a closed session, or vice versa? What's your pleasure?
I'm sure these people'd like to go home. I mean, are they gonna get after close session, here's comment time, so why not get it on there? And then they can stay if they like, so...
Ready-made agreement? All right. This one, have I read this out with you?
Me? Have I said enough tonight?
No, I want to know more.
I just welcome all of our new members, and Madam Chairman. Hope you have a good year, and things turn around, we get some businesses going, and create things out. I'd like to get that extra money for the schools and the state. My daughter's a teacher, and I know very well that they're underpaid. It took a lot to educate her, to Emery, to get that, and, you know, they need a lot more. They really do. They did a great job. All of them do. All the school system is great. I hate to see it declining, but unfortunately, I've said many a time, we can't go out on interstate out here with a shotgun and stop somebody and say, "You're gonna put a business here." We have to make it enticing enough for them to wanna come. Congratulations for you, Ms. Digg, Ms. Esther Slaughter.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Mr. Colson?
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Stevenson?
I all welcome our new members. I think we all come pretty well summed everything up, so there's no need for me sitting here with a parakeet. You know, elections are over with, time to put things in the past, and sit here what we're really just sitting here for. So, you know, I sit here for the benefit of the county, I believe everybody else sits here, so I hope we can move it forward.
Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just real quick, for those of you that don't know, I come from the healthcare background. I'm a retail pharmacist, and I've seen firsthand the opiate scourge on our county and surrounding counties and everything like that. It is what it is, it's here, it is here, we gotta deal with it. A phrase was once uttered by a woman that wrote the book, Dopesick. If you've never read it, you need to read it, it'll shed some light on what's going on. But her phrase is, "We cannot arrest ourselves out of the opiate issue, we have to educate ourselves out of the opiate issue." So, with that being said, we need to start thinking outside the box, how we can bring our kids into the 21st century education-wise, which alludes to what I asked, the question maybe very poorly revolving around the 21st century technology, the solar, the wind, you know, the president just launched our newest member, our newest arm of the military, the Space Division. Why can't we turn out students that can go and be a part of that? Well, better yet, get that education and come home and build whatever we need for the 21st century here. But it starts with the education, the classroom educators. And that's all I've got to say.
Mr. Colson?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just want to thank you all for being here tonight, for coming out. Certainly is a good thing to see a lot of folks from the community at these meetings. I think it's really important to have citizens that are involved in the decision, I think, because obviously, the seven of us that sit up here represent you, and at the end of the day, our decisions affect you. So, thank you for coming out to support us. Thank you for the city members for a warm welcome, and thank you for the willingness to work together. We may not always see eye to eye, and our, we may get frustrated with each other sometimes, but as Mr. Stevenson said, we're here to serve you all, so I look forward to working together with everybody and doing the best for Smith County. I'm excited about a new year and a fresh start. Thank you.
Let's have a good year, that's pretty well said it all, let's just have a good year and work together.
Well, I would like to say that I feel very humbled to be working with such a talented group of people. It's just a great group, and I feel very blessed and very fortunate. I think that we, as a county, are lucky to have all the talent that's been afforded here, and I think it's gonna serve our vision and our mission well. And I think we're gonna work together to do really good things for this county, and I look forward to it. And again, thank all of you, because without you, we wouldn't be here. So, thank you so much. So, I guess we need a motion to go in the closed session.
Madam Chairman, I move that the, let me get my comment on you right. I move the Smith County Board of Supervisors convene in closed session to discuss the, to hold an eighth discussion on our consideration of the investment of public funds, where competition or marketing is involved, or if made public initially, the financial interest of a governmental unit would be adversely affected, and that's under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711-A6. And also to go into closed session, for the board to discuss the county administrator's position and any other personnel discussions that the county staff may have concerns. That's under eight, that's under 22, 22.3711A1. Thank you.
Do you have a second?
I'm good with that.
I didn't have a question, but we're, anybody that's involved in that discussion, we need to invite them by name?
Yes.
So, can we amend that motion to include Mr. Bill Rush, Mr. John Clark, Mr. Charlie Harrington, and Mr. David Thanks?
And the chair.
And Chair Schuler. And Mr. Jim Barker, and...
Did we include attorney?
Yes.
Yes. Any other?
And we thank everyone else.
Don't need to repeat that, but you hear.
Okay. So, wait, 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 have we had a second on it?
Well, we haven't.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor? Any opposed?
Wait, did you vote yay or nay?
Vote.
Yeah, yeah, wait. Yay. They didn't see your hand, I don't think.